We're going to resume our meeting, so if folks, they need to continue the conversation, if they can do that on the outside, it'll be greatly appreciated. We are, next on our agenda is the enrollment balancing for Jefferson and PK eight and Superintendent Smith.
So, I'm going to call up Judy Brennan, who is our Director of Enrollment Transfer, Harriet Adair, who is the Executive Director of Schools and Operational Support, and Antonio Lopez, who is our Regional Administrator for the Jefferson Cluster. And these three have been leading this process that actually began last summer. And we have, the most recent stage in the process, we've had six potential scenarios that were really making visible all the potential ingredients that would, could go into what may become the final scenario. And we then went out and listened to people's response throughout the community, both internally and externally. I think we've had more than 1,000 people weighing in on just what the various features, what the impact is. What we're trying to accomplish with this is a number of classes offered at each grade level that lets us provide the most robust program and access to program for students. So that's our primary driver, particularly at the middle grades where we've got schools that have been too small to have the kind of robust programming we want to offer. Tonight, we will have two scenarios that come before you that really now bring, both of which could be viable, both of which are still a work in progress and will feed the next, the next period of public input that now I become the listener to, that will inform a proposal I come back and present to the Board on February 1st, or release it February 1st for presentation to the Board on February 4th. So we're again still in process. You're going to hear two proposals that have features, it's not a vote on one proposal or the other, it's really putting forward here are the ingredients that get us to the thing we were shooting for, which is robust, access to robust programs for every kid in that cluster that adequately prepares them for high school. So before I actually go to the meat of the presentation, what I want to make visible is just what the process is and opportunities for input because the public will again have a lot of opportunity to weigh in. So today, before actually bringing this, to make this public before the Board, staff at each one of the schools that were impacted, we're presenting to the school staffs at each of those schools. We have school-based informational sessions for families that will be held on January 17th and January 22nd. We'll be having a session that's specifically for partners, pastors, and policymakers on January 18th. We'll have a community input session for language-specific communities on January 24th, and then another community input session on January 26th, which is a Saturday at 1:00. And we will have various members of the Board, myself, and the team that's been leading this, as well as principals and leadership from the schools at all of these sessions listening. But all of that then feeds what will become the final proposal. So we're really looking for response to any aspect of the proposals that people want to respond to. So with that, I will turn it over to our team to get into the specifics of what are now the two proposals.
Thank you Superintendent Smith. Co-Chairs Gonzalez, Bellisle, Directors, Student Representative, and Superintendent. My name is Antonio Lopez, I'm the Regional Administrator for Franklin and Jefferson. And tonight in the hour that we have, we have three objectives. And the objective is to review the enrollment and balancing process. The second, to describe the two options for the Jefferson pre-K eight cluster, the community engagement plan, and lastly, to listen to your questions and feedback. So we're going to start with, this is a cycle that you have seen, and right now we are in the listening and proposal. We're moving to the decide, and eventually to the implementation, and then we start the cycle again in terms of assessing whether the implementation was successful. So as you can see, we're in the, right in the middle, we're ready for the next step. And like Superintendent Smith described, there is a process, and then eventually it will be coming to this board for a vote, for a decision.
Dr. Adair, I was wondering if these were, oh, okay. We do have this set up in a process for how we're going to do this. Basically, what we're going to talk about today in terms of the process of how we came down to the two scenarios, we looked at, after listening to all of the input from the variety of audiences, internal, external stakeholder groups, and multiple, in multiple venues and forums, we did decide on a couple of things, and prioritized around a couple of things. But things to keep in mind is that we know that the enrollment balancing of, the balancing of enrollment by itself is not going to improve student achievement. That what we're looking for are numbers that would get to the point in the Jefferson cluster so that every year annually, we would not have to be reducing staff because we don't have sufficient numbers in the building to be able to maintain the programs that we have in place. So in setting the priorities for these last two options, we basically came up with a way of balancing enrollment in two different strategies that would give us significant enough numbers so that the resources that go with the numbers, once you get them, could be stabilized no matter which one of the two processes. The focus is on academic achievement and the acceleration of achievement and the elevation of achievement. The other focus is on making certain that all students have access to programs that we have already know will prove to be effective across the cluster. So we're not looking at new things, some new idea that we dreamt up, but ideas that have proven to be effective in this cluster. And we are also looking at establishing a sense of having students recognizing that pre-K through 12 is the trajectory for college choices and post-secondary options, that you don't start at ninth grade to begin talking to students and getting them to start thinking about how, what they might want to do once they exit the K-12 arena. So, over the years, because the numbers in the, in the cluster have fluctuated, that has led to programmatic instability, staffing instability, and the inability to get these programs that we know are good things for kids in place long enough to get the results that we would like to have happen. So, the cluster, once again to remind you, are the eight schools that have guaranteed enrollment to the Jefferson Middle College, and we're also talking about the Humboldt and Tomball buildings. King and Oakley Green has low enrollment at all the grades. Fabian Vernon and Woodlawn, lower upper grade enrollment, and Beach Chief Joe Fabian, limited class space across the building. And Boise Elliott Humboldt has the potential for crowding in future years. Without changes, we would see that constant up and down and sway that has been impacting this cluster for a number of years now. So once again, as I said, we are going to try and right-size these two proposals, right-size the school to make certain that we have strong academic support. The emphasis is on the quality of middle schools across all of the input that we got. Consistently, one of the things that we heard was, things are great, we like our primary grades, or we really like this, but every school, every audience spoke to needing to strengthen. Even if they were pleased with what was happening, they knew that they needed to have a much more robust middle grades program in all of the schools. We also want to make sure that the enrollment changes will result in something that's an outcome, outcome of equitable and high-quality academic programs. In other words, why do the change if it isn't going to improve the academics in the building? And as I said, linkages to the high school curriculum and access to college and post-secondary opportunities. Of course, we would like all of our students in the Jefferson cluster to feed Jefferson High School. We're proud of that school, we support that school, but if they make other choices, we obviously want them to be successful no matter where they go. And so we're looking at advanced placement at other high school options, and other higher education partners are linking with us, like the PhD to three piece with Concordia. We are looking for kids to be able to be academically successful so they can take advantage of any option that comes their way. And of course, we want to nurture college-going, college-going cluster across, ugh, this is hard to say, college-going culture across the cluster. Okay. Okay, who put that sentence in there? All right, so here's the process. Do you want to do the process Judy?
Sure, okay, sure. Okay, so Superintendent Smith said, we began the process in the summer, but actively since the fall, we've held a number, about 20 formal meetings. We released six scenarios for feedback. We received about 250 written comments on those scenarios alone, and over 600 comments, written comments so far. All of those comments are documented in binders that are in the Board office, and as we continue to get them, we'll continue to update that body of information. We now are at the point, as you heard that, and we'll be talking about tonight, we have two options where we've called down the feedback on the scenarios to two workable sets of change. We're proposing six meetings and we'll run through that list. Again, there's a few things that maybe are even changed since, since earlier, looking towards the Superintendent's recommendation, and then your actions coming next. So, this is just a quick reminder that we have different types of tools that we can use in enrollment balancing that make different kinds of changes. And some of them, such as changing the transfer policy, tightening down transfers, or making boundary changes, are what we call slow change. So it can right-size over time, but it doesn't bring a lot of immediate impact, particularly when you're looking at the middle grades, because we start things like boundary change at kindergarten, and that's, it has the biggest impact at the lower grades. It takes years in a K-8 school before you see that impact in the upper grades. Other things such as grade reconfiguration, consolidation, enclosure, does cause existing students to move. So it's more impact immediately, it's more disruption, but you get bigger results. And of course, we always look at things like facility changes options as well, but as we know, we're limited due to cost, and so that's just the framework of changes that we, we're designing these options within. And finally, I just wanted to mention, as you've heard, we're focused on strengthening, strengthening the middle years. We're looking at having at least two classrooms per grade level in a K-8, even in those grades six, seven, and eight, which means you need more kids at the lower grades. So trying to right-size schools in an effective way is an important part of this, and in a way that crosses all of those grades. We would look at having at least six classrooms per grade level in a middle school, which is three to four feeder schools, and at this point, there's no middle school in the cluster now. Okay. All that preamble, we would now like to describe for you the two options. You've received a packet of information that includes maps, and hopefully those will be visible where you are. I'm going to put some on the screen here. I don't know how helpful they're going to be, so let me know later if any of this information up here isn't visible. Okay. So in the first option, our focus is on maintaining the K-8 structure that exists in the cluster now, but consolidating in a couple of, particularly taking three schools and consolidating down to two in order to increase access to programs for students. So in this change, Chief Joseph, Oakley Green, and Woodlawn come together next year as a single pre-K eight school that operates on two campuses. With this, the Woodlawn building would close. After that point, the boundary for Woodlawn would be divided between Chief Joseph, Oakley Green, King and Access, or, sorry, King and Vernon. And additionally, the access program currently at Saban would move to King. So visually, here's what this looks like with, I'm not sure that's going to work very well. So you see the Woodlawn campus closing, the boundary, the potential boundary change in the portion of the Woodlawn boundary that would become part of the Chief Joseph, Oakley Green boundary, the portion that would become part of the King boundary, and the portion that would become part of the Vernon boundary. And you see Oakley Green and Chief Joseph becoming a dual-campus, single-school. That, yes, that was sort of probably grades pre-K through eight. You see Access coming into King, and a small boundary change that over time builds enrollment at Vernon. One of the questions that you may have is, why would Woodlawn be the school that we would look at for a closure in this scenario? We've visited Woodlawn a couple of times this fall, made many other visits there, the Regional Administrator, the former Regional Administrator. There are a lot of strengths and values in Woodlawn, teachers, parents, students working very hard on achievement. Other factors that we see though, are that a capture rate in their neighborhood area that's chronically low, that's hovering at around 40 percent. So more than half of the students who live in their neighborhood continue to make other choices. And even though they've seen growth at the lower grades, it's still, it's still so low and so suppressed, it's going to take a long time for those changes to impact the upper grades where the sizes are smallest. In addition, we see continuing low achievement data, and we understand that that means that we, we have to accelerate and elevate our academic efforts in that school. It makes it much, much harder to do that at the middle grades when their numbers are really low. So we see that we need a more immediate change in order to give students the access to programs that will nurture that academic success. There are other possibilities we want to quickly mention aligned with this option. As you can see, we have no direct change for Beach, Boise Elliott Humboldt, or Fabian in this option. However, there are possibilities in the future, there could be immersion changes that are aligned with the district's immersion plan, and that could have an impact on Beach in some way. Boise Elliott Humboldt could look at moving to the Tubman Campus in the future. Fabian is slated to receive portable classrooms in advance of its full modernization and continue its partnership with Concordia on three to PhD. There are additional boundary changes that we could look at in the future to right-size neighborhoods within those schools. So there are some unusual aspects to their neighborhoods that we, we would be happy to go in and clean up once we get these major structural decisions made. Humboldt could become a regional early learning center in 2014 or later. We want to align that overall early learning center plan for the Jefferson Cluster and the rest of the district with state objectives and that, and you'll see more of that coming later. In the interim, we believe that all the schools that have pre-K now will maintain pre-K so long as funding is still available for that. And finally, we want to say that it's important to probably look at our high school dual assignment choices for future students and make sure that they're appropriately lined. Again, once we make these important structural decisions, these are the types of changes that could come behind. Quickly, by the numbers, here are estimated enrollment impacts. You can see what the current enrollment is at each school, what the estimated enrollment would be if we did nothing, and what the change would be, I probably should have just highlighted the schools that changed and not those that stay the same. But you can see particularly the Chief Joseph line is the line for the combined Chief Joseph, Oakley Green, and Woodlawn. So about 1,100 students divided between the, between the Chief Joseph and Oakley Green campus. Allows us to fully utilize both of those schools. Oakley Green would be full for the first time in a long time. Chief Joseph would not be overcrowded so long as we could make grade structure changes that made the most of the larger building, still serving, Chief Joseph serving for the lower grades. You see King growing, both from the inclusion of Access and from the beginning effects of the boundary change, 636. We still believe that there's some room for growth between the King boundary and the Access program. And then Vernon continuing to grow through, through an enlarged neighborhood and also through increased capture rates. So what you've seen then is we have immediate program access improvements, particularly for Woodlawn, Chief Joseph, Oakley Green, and King students. We have slow but steady growth for Vernon. This option does require that we close a school. It requires that we develop a strong shared campus model, and it'll mean that we'll have additional transportation needs, including some students who are now walkers to their current school. Other specific resource impacts will be modeled if this option becomes the Superintendent's recommendation. So we would imagine that there are many more questions that you might have, and community members might have, and we will do our best to resolve those questions as soon as we are able to sort out which of these options indeed is going to be moving forward. So that's my brief summary on option one. I'd like to turn to option two. This is another way of leading to similar outcomes, but using different structures and impacting different schools. So it brings a middle school back into the cluster, as well as ensures that the remaining K-8s are programmatically strong. Certainly, if you're bringing strong middle grades competition to schools nearby, you want to make sure that the K-8s that are left are ready to stand up to that competition. In this, the current Oakley Green school would close at the end of this year, and then reopen in 2014 as a junior middle college school, serving grades six through eight. So that would require a planning year, and during that time, current Oakley Green students would move to Woodlawn. Many of them are from other neighborhoods because in grades K through five, it's a focus option choice, so the students would also have the right to return to their neighborhood school if they preferred that. We also would need a location for the Oakley Green neighborhood sixth grade, so the kids that are from the Chief Joseph neighborhood for fifth grade, and that could be Woodlawn. There's also the option, if that doesn't work, of portables on the Chief Joseph campus, but that comes with a cost. In addition to that change, that is to setting a, a middle school at Oakley Green that's fed by four schools, did that slide name the four schools? No. Why don't I name those four schools? They would be Beach, Boise Elliott, Chief Joseph, and Woodlawn. In addition to that, King and Vernon would consolidate into a single school, an international baccalaureate school. Both of those schools currently have that program. It would be a larger and more robust school under this change. We envision two ways that that consolidation could happen. The first, the most abrupt, the most traditional, is that one of the schools closes, the other, all the students go to the, to the largest building, that would likely be King, and then we would do boundary changes to make sure that that neighborhood was right-sized to fit that one building. But we also want to continue some of our out-of-the-box thinking and recognizing the programmatic alignment that always, already happens with those schools, and that we'd like to find another home for Access, which is right now at Saban. We would also propose that it's possible to have both campuses remain open in a shared campus model, similar to what I just described for Oakley Green and Chief Joseph, and that the Access Academy, their grades one through eight, would exist on one of those two campuses. And as I said, if we go with a traditional consolidation, we would have to do boundary changes. So I'm going to flip to the map here, and you see the four feeder schools feeding into Oakley Green. You see the one-year, the shift for Oakley Green current students onto the Woodlawn campus beginning next year, and then Oakley Green open in 2014. You see our either-or way of consolidating King and Vernon that may include Access or may not. And you see the potential for some boundary changes that might have to be made. If we go with a traditional consolidation, King becomes the new school, the Vernon building closes, those boundary changes would likely have to move through Fabian, and Fabian isn't a school that can accept more students for several years. So there's some complexities that could come with that. One of the questions that you might have, or I just wanted to spend another minute on this detail that's in this particular option, of our request for a planning year to develop our middle school model. It's a traditional method for opening a new school, where you take the time to hire your administrators, select your curriculum, build your relationships both with your feeder schools and with the high school that you're going to be sending students to, build up your marketing strategy, give your feeder schools time to adapt, and then you go ahead and open the school. So those are some of the things that we're looking for here. We believe that that time will be extremely valuable in getting that new school off to a strong start. Again, some future possibilities that I mentioned before exist as well with this plan, including future possible changes with immersion. The Fabian plan remains largely the same under this as it did what I described before. We might still have additional boundary changes between some smaller, in some smaller neighborhood areas. The early learning center potential exists, and the need, no doubt, to realign our high school dual assignment choices, or at least examine them, make sure that they're still appropriate after we decide these structural changes. The impacts that we believe come with this option are improved access to our middle grades programs and to high school and beyond, that it really galvanizes the notion of a junior middle college as a theme that drives that college-ready culture wide, cluster-wide, you're right, that's hard to say, across, across the area. That there's strength in a planning year, but it does require additional staff and student movement. It requires us to decide to either close our school or develop a dual campus model. That'll be additional transition and transportation for many students, and there are other specific resource impacts that will be modeled if this is the option that becomes the Superintendent's recommendation. Finally, by the numbers, you see Beach, Boise Elliott, Chief Joseph, and Woodlawn as our feeder schools.
As K-5s.
K-5s. That doesn't include their pre-K. If you look at, for example, Chief Joseph at 513, Woodlawn at 444, like if, under this model, that's a, that's a place where a boundary change might make sense, might be just enough to build Woodlawn right to the size that we would want, and provide a little more space at Chief Joseph, which is full right now. So that's an example of how a future boundary change might support this overall structure change. You see the, the middle school in 2015 with 522 students in it. What's going on in the cluster right now is that you have significantly higher numbers of students in grades four and below. So for that first year, I mean, we can count how many kids are attending the schools in those clusters, and we see that it may start with a relatively small, like sixth grade, but it'll grow over time. So starting with about 480 in the first year, 522 on the way up to 600. This would have an opening sixth grade class of about 200 students, which is what we look for in our middle school model. Okay, so that is the brief summary, and then we'll quickly go over where we are with the, yeah.
So today, we met with the staffs of four schools, Oakley Green, Chief Joseph, Woodlawn, and Vernon. The principal, we're going to talk to the other schools. And what you have right now is the plan in terms of how we're going to take these options to the community. And as you can see, we're going to be pretty busy in the next two weeks. So we have a variety of meetings in the different schools. We have on January 22nd, we're meeting with the planning team that helped us in the beginning in terms of the, of the planning. We meet on the 23rd with the ESL families. You see that we're meeting with King and Access, and then on January 26th, we have the community forum. That will be at Jefferson. We also have a meeting with all the special education families. We have an online survey that runs through the 28, in which the community can give us ideas of feedback about this process. And one thing that we always, that we keep in mind is how do we make sure that we hear from the families that, that for some reason or another, historically, we have not heard from, especially, you know, families of color. I mean, everyone, but how do we, how do we intentionally go and look for the families that historically have not, cannot be now represented? How do we also engage our partners? And we have a meeting with the, with the partners, with the ministers, and the community in terms of, we want to hear their voice. And also including the different organizations like the local churches, SEI, the Latino Network, ERCO, and those organizations. All right, so we're ready for any questions, suggestions, concerns?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I guess just a couple of questions off the bat. I'm in option one. I see some, still having some, some middle grade issues with King and Vernon. I know the King numbers were increased because of the access program, but is that program going to operate separately from the other middle programs? I mean, we'll have students under, you know, under the roof, but that may not be exactly what we're looking for. We might be looking for students within those particular middle-year classrooms, so I'm not really sure how that program's going to integrate. So we may still see some number issues within King. I think the same is true with Vernon. I mean, we're looking, I think the comment was, "Slow and steady." I don't know if slow and steady is, is where we need to be at this point. I think the other, the other piece, I'm not going to touch the shared campus issue because I think some of my colleagues might, but the, the Beach, essentially leaving Beach alone in this case, which, which some might seem, or think is being appropriate, you know, I'm not quite sure how, how we can continue to support with the size of that space, support both a...
Immersion.
The community portion of the school and the immersion portion of the school, particularly with, with goals of the district moving towards increasing immersion as an option. So those are some of the initial questions, pardon me, initial questions that I have with, with option one.
I can throw some questions out. So a couple of questions. Just one would be around the, again, around the immersion piece and when we would see recommendations or what some scenarios or ideas for that could be, because it's pretty unclear or open-ended in this information here. So that would be helpful to be clear on that. Obviously, the dual campus model's going to be an area for a lot of questions from a lot of folks, I'm sure, what type of grade split and, and numbers and what would make sense, yeah. And then another piece would be just additional detail, and I understand that maybe for some of this, you're wanting to wait and, is that wait and see how much, how deep into detail you go on which scenario, when you're not sure which scenario you're proceeding with. But having said that, in that one that has a middle school, I think it'd be really helpful at what, as soon as possible or feasible, to have more detail about what exactly that program could provide and what that would look like. So this is, I'll stop there and let others weigh in.
I know Director Knoll sent a bunch of questions, so I don't know if she wants to articulate it.
I can just give you guys my list of questions that I shared with board members yesterday, I think it was, yeah. But I will bring up a couple of them. One had to do with immersion, very similar to the questions that Ruth, or Director Atkins was asking. Another one had to do with Concordia. I still haven't, some of these questions are questions I asked about a month ago when we were all together, and I still haven't heard an answer on any of them. So one of them had to do with Concordia and what kind of discussions are going on, and what do they think about a K5 versus a K8? I think that'd be helpful. And then, of course, there's the question of K5 versus K8. And I, I know, you know, the original intent, intent, which was before I was on the board, was that the K8s were supposed to be better or serve students better. And so I am, again, asking for information about K5 versus K8. Someone left me a sheet from December of 2011, so I wonder if we have any updated information about a comparison of how our kids are doing in the K5s versus the K8s and how they were doing. Those students who are in K8s now, what's the history on those students before? How were they doing before? I know they're not the same students, but what, what kind of a difference has it made in that neighborhood, having a K8 versus a K5? So I'm looking for things like test scores, milestone comparisons, discipline referrals, attendance records, all of those kinds of things, and high school success, what it's looking like when those students get to high school, the K8s versus the K5s. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the split campus. To me, it just seems like a bigger middle school with a few more grades in it. Is it going to be a 4'8", or is it a 3'8", or is it a 5'8", or, you know, what is it going to be? And then I also, you know, my own experience with the split campus is the Hollyrood one, because it's in my district, and I haven't heard much good about that. So I, I'm just a little concerned about that, whether it's really the best thing for children. And then IB, again, what's our policy? How's it going to go in elementary schools? Is this something that provides so much benefit for students that we should be converting all of our schools? Is it, is it a matter of cost? And if it's a matter of cost, is it something that we want to put as a priority in these constrained budget times? For access, same question, kind of the same question as around Concordia. What's been the conversation with the parents there? What are the, I'm, I'm interested in what the requirement is for access. Is it 99th percentile? Is it every student there has to be at least 99th percentile?
Plus.
Plus, okay. I knew it was high, I'm just thinking 99 plus, okay.
There's additional criteria as well, that's fine.
Yes. So what's the criteria? And then I had a question around utilization, because I couldn't find my book that had how big each school was and how overcrowded some of them are, and whether we could actually fit a K8 into some of those buildings, or, you know, is that just an impossible dream for us to put a K, a full-sized K8 in there? And then I guess for my colleagues on the board, if we're talking about size of schools and one of the issues is the size, what do we need to start thinking about for the next bond? I know that we've been focused on high schools, but if we really are having these kind of issues with our K8s, maybe there's some question about, we could do something in addition to just our high schools, or, or some little tweak into that. So I don't have any, I don't have any really strong feelings about either one of the options right now. I just have, as you could just tell, a lot of questions. And I think some of these questions are questions that we need to deal with on a policy level as a board, and I would like to see us be able to do that before we make a decision on this, but I think that we're probably now getting a little cramped on time for that, so. But answers to the questions would be fabulous, so thank you.
Could I ask just one question? You said K5s and K8s. Did you mean K5s and K8s, or did you mean middle school and K8s?
Middle schools and K8s.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. You get a different answer with the K5s.
Well, I suppose it would be a good, both would be the best. I mean, are our K5 students doing better in a K8 or than, than this, you know, so you could use, you could do both, especially in comparison to how they were doing before they were K8s, so.
Thank you for all this work. I think I, I do immediately have a preference at this moment in time for the first option. Seems like it makes a little bit more sense to me, but I'm excited to hear kind of what the community reaction is to it. As hard as it is, I think it's good that we're looking at potentially closing one building to try to make sure that we have enough kids in the rest, so in either option that works. I think in option one, my biggest concern is, I think, what Director Morton said, which is the actual size of King. And what really is the benefit in terms of the curriculum or the enrichment opportunities by putting access in that building? I'm not sure that there would necessarily be a lot of overlap with the kids. Maybe there's a benefit in terms of teachers being close, but I, I have big concern about the size of the King student population still under this scenario, and would love to have more information on that. And I guess I also am curious to know whether we looked at providing access with its own building, because again, I think when you have two programs that are so different, sharing a building, it ends up oftentimes having difficult consequences. So I'm just curious whether or not we looked at, I was curious why access was thrown into this whole conversation to start with, and I'm still curious about how it benefits, in this case, the students at King, or the program at King, maybe, is what I should be saying. Couple of other, just more general questions. I love the fact that we have the IB program at a couple of our schools here. I would still like to understand if we're considering an IB high school option for those kids as they matriculate. I think there's an assumption here that our, that our pre-K kids would stay put for a year and then potentially move to the early learning center. I still don't feel like I have my arms around whether that's a good idea or a bad idea to have an early learning center. I think it's a different conversation perhaps, but at the same time, it impacts the numbers in all of these buildings, and it may impact whether or not families feel a connection to the school right from the start. So I just have a general question still about the direction we're going there, and again, it may potentially be another conversation, but it certainly impacts this conversation. And then I guess I do want to understand a little bit more the benefits of the shared campus model. I mean, I see it at Easty Moss-Sullivan, it, it works, it's, it's fine. I think there's some benefits and there's some real challenges. And so as we, as we look at a potential Chief Joe, Oakley Green shared campus, I think it would be worthwhile for us to all be very transparent in what's good and bad and difficult and challenging and beneficial to that model, so.
So just following up on that, one of the, you know, you said you've got these two options, and so you don't want to go too deep on each one until you decide which direction you're going to go, but I think for people to understand these options, you may have to go a little deeper than this. And so the idea about the, the shared campus in option one, that's a really big number of kids. How would you split that and what would that look like? Because I think for families to have a strong opinion, they'd really have to have more information about what that would look like. And that's, that's a big number of kids, 1,100 kids. I don't think we have another school with this shared campus with that many students. You know, and maybe it's fine because it's split between two schools and it's manageable, but how does that work? So I, I think a little more development on that is important. And then, you know, the idea of a junior middle college program, what does that offer? What's, you know, what is that? We haven't had any discussion about that before. So in order to choose between these things, you have to know something more about what's, what's the appeal of that. And, and then we have to have some pretty strong understanding about the numbers, that you could support the numbers in a middle school and in the remaining pre-K8 programs, because we're not solving the middle grade problem if you, if you weaken the remaining K8 programs. So I have a, you know, a strong concern about that, that if we go for one of these options or some mix, whatever, wherever we end up, we want to end up with strong programs in all of our schools. On the, on the IB question, it's intriguing to me to, to combine the resources for those IB programs in one building. So that, that seems like a plus, because those are resource-intensive programs and require a lot of staff development. So if you have that in one place, that, that could be a real, a real plus in terms of staffing, I would think. So I think that we need a little more, a little more information to go on for us and for the community to, to understand what the choices really would mean, what they would
So one, I guess I just want to highlight, Director Knoll's, your question about IB and whether or not it's, we know that it's rigorous, and we know that it's also resource-intensive. And I think that in some ways, it's rigorous because it's resource-intensive. And so whether or not, like, as a discussion, is this what we're prioritizing, I think is a good question just across the cluster. And I'm not sure, I was talking with one administrator, and they were saying there hasn't been a lot of research done in IB's equity, how it works with different populations. And so it'd be interesting discussion, I think, at some point. There, I'm going to give some of what I kind of like. The shared campus, like, again, Director Knoll's, it seems like just renaming a, a middle school and an elementary school, and maybe saying it's a shared campus because it doesn't fit the exact enrollment grade configuration. And I'm not sure that I'm, I'm, I guess I need to be sold a little bit on, on shared campuses. I appreciate the boundary changes in option one. I'm curious why we didn't, I know that a lot of Fabians isn't developable land, but I'm curious why we wouldn't look at that option. And then two, and Director Knoll's brought up the bond, but when we're going to rebuild Fabian, I'd be curious what size we're rebuilding it for. And I don't want us to have, to build a new school in three years and say, oh, by that way, by the way, that means we're going to automatically close two more schools around. I'd like to make that a really full campus. And then again, in our budget constraints, I feel like we do have to be looking at building utilization as far as, we have to be putting the most number of kids in the most, in the biggest schools that we have. And so, you know, I know that Oakley, I don't know how big Oakley Green's facility is right off the top of my head, but that's something that I like about option two, is combining two IB schools that are already on progress, Vernon and, and King, into a much bigger school. Like when I, what I heard from, from community members is that, yeah, we're, we'd be happy to have a middle school if we could open a middle school with aiming for 900, because whether some people would leave or whether or not, but they'd feel really good about those options. If you can't do that, then it's almost like, well, then we'd rather prefer, we'd rather stay with what we have. And I'm not sure in some of these options that we get to a level that, that folks would be excited about. And the last thing I guess I'll say about option two is it, it feels a little bit like what, what, what people who don't have to make the decision get to imagine. Like, we'll do a little of this, a little of this, and there's a couple areas in here where we're not quite sure where they go. We'll have to figure that out. But we have to figure that out. And specifically, I'm thinking about those boundary change areas where it doesn't seem that they fit in this school and they don't fit in that school. An option that I'll, I'll just toss out there again, because I heard in the community that if you're looking at option two, building that Oakley Green middle school, or maybe it's the middle, junior middle college, I'm going to get confused with all those names, I'm going to tell you, but that there was at one point a discussion, if, if Beach's, for example, immersion program, their middle grades would then move, would there be benefit to look at grabbing Peninsula folks? And I don't know what, you know, Peninsula hasn't been engaged in this conversation. I don't want to freak folks at Peninsula out. But would, would that make, would that make sense to, to bring those two together? And I don't know, I don't remember what's on our list the next time, but, so I guess those are, those are some of my reactions. I, I too think that there will have, I prefer a school or two closing in those options because I'm not sure that we're right-sized in this cluster, and that's always hard. But I want to thank you for your planned outreach from here on out, because I think there have been significant sections of our population that we have not been engaged with. When I look at the proposed closures, or when I look at, it affects really strongly one demographic of our population, and that, that just doesn't sit well with me. So we need to figure that out.
So they get to listen more today, right? But, but there was a, you know, after at least one, my, some of my children went to school, was a middle school. What was the size at that point in time for?
Probably about between 650 and 680 something.
And that was their capacity?
I don't know that it was at, at full capacity, but it was pretty close to capacity. 700 is about the capacity. I'm remembering when it was a middle school.
Can you find a microphone? I, I can hear you fine, it's just our...
Can I jump in with a couple?
Go ahead.
So option two, just a couple of, maybe clarifying questions that I'd like to hear a response from, if tonight is appropriate, that'd be great. But that, I think Director Belial mentioned, talked about the Spanish immersion piece at Beach. If this is now a K5, is there any sort of Spanish immersion post-K5, what, what that looks like? I'd be curious about that. I think, too, size-wise, you look at the... I think too, size wise, you look at, uh, the shared campus or consolidation of Vernon, Vernon and King, and, you know, 2015 projections, uh, with access is 985. Does that, can King hold 1,000 students?
No.
No?
That's a, that would, they would have, we would have to use two campuses in that model.
Okay, in that model.
Exactly. And, and if I could just really quickly, the intent of the, the K five, Beach K five is that both neighborhood and immersion then go to grade six, eight at Ocley-Green. The immersion program would then continue to feed into Roosevelt. Beach neighborhood students also have the right of either, um, attending Roosevelt or Jefferson Middle College. They have a guaranteed hold.
Right. So the immersion program would continue to Ocley as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Director Morton, can I just double check? So King could hold 735. Is that correct?
Well, when I was the principal at King, uh, our number was around 800.
So yes, King could hold 735.
Yes, and, and the neighborhood facility was not part of the configuration at that point. So the answer is yes.
Okay, I'm hearing yes, and I'm seeing body language that might challenge that. Not from you, from somebody else.
Well, the reason I would say that is because remember, when I was the principal there, it was a pre-K five school. So now you have, um, six, if you had sixth, seventh, and eighth graders there, you have the science lab that you'd have to put into the configuration. We had, uh, computer labs and so forth and so on. One of the things that we've talked about doing is having a neutral, which I do not consider myself to be, educator who has familiarity with, uh, those grade levels, walk the building with a facilities person to really get a better sense of it. Because when they look at it with one eye and an educator looks at it with another eye, you get a different kind of an answer. But I, I, I believe you could get 700 students in that building.
In our practice, a little bit different, right? In terms of all these years, I mean, in terms of what people are doing these days?
Based on the, the complexity of the program that was, I was running when I was there, actually it was a much more complex, comprehensive program than in terms of some of the additional services we were providing than actually what's in the building right now.
Is when we actually had money?
Well, we had more money from different kinds of sources. We had the DSEC money, we had the, what they used to call state disadvantaged money, you had Title I money, plus you had general fund money. And the way that the buildings were staffed was different at that point in time. So, uh, it was a much different configuration, but we had, you know, music and strings and all kinds of different kinds of things.
I want to be mindful of the time that, uh, there and, and provide an opportunity for our student representative to say something there, but, um, I want to thank also my colleagues for their bringing up the, the dual language immersion. You know, one of the, I guess the challenging things is, you know, the, the, I guess from where we start, I mean, that, that, uh, enrollment does not guarantee necessary increase in, in, in academic achievement. Um, and, and conversely, you know, more numbers doesn't necessarily, without changing the academics, and, you know, there are thought in that building, does not necessarily guarantee that they're going to continue to maintain those numbers, um, as we have seen, I think, in the, in the, in some of the schools, I think, within the cluster. Um, in, in the, I guess the discussion, I mean, part of it is that, that, you know, the, the timing of, of planning and, and those things. But, you know, changing in regards to the whole thing at Beach, I mean, for example, there are a number of folks that apply that get turned away because there is not enough, uh, capacity there. And yet, um, you know, there's no immediate, uh, plans or, that have come forth in regards to considering other schools within that, um, cluster that will be, uh, interested. I know that there, at least from what I hear from parents at King, there were some discussions at these and some interest from some of the parents there, and, and I haven't had those kind of discussions with other parents in, in that area. Uh, but I, I think what, uh, Director Belial says, I mean, is also, if, if we are feeding this, um, I mean, the feeder pattern is that it, you know, they go to Roosevelt for, for that. Um, you know, what are, what are other neighboring schools that could also be considered within that process, I think would be important. The challenge part, of course, is we only dealing with numbers right now, not programs. But the argument that I keep hearing from people outside in the community is that, okay, but, um, what are you actually doing to, to entice people to remain in their, in their neighborhood with, with programmatic, uh, work that is, you know, that is of interest? Uh, and I'm not sure that even with some of the proposed changes that are here, even, you know, that there is mixing of, of things that, that will be sufficient to, to guarantee that, that enrollment that, that we're looking for. Uh, the greatest potential, I mean, I think in, in, I think more than any other cluster is in the Jefferson cluster, and particularly, I think that corridor of MLK or close to it in regards to including, I mean, increasing enrollment. But I think we still have to talk about program. Um, and I'm not sure that you all, I mean, at what point, I mean, you're, you're looking at that, right?
Well, and I mean, I, I mean, I, right. But the way our system is set up right now, right, and this is community, right? It's, this team's tasked with coming up with how to get the numbers right. There's another team with how to, how do we get the academics and how do we have a district wide strategy for the programs? But I agree, but.
But if, could it just be that in terms of the examples of what we could provide at different numbers, what are the, what the programs could look like? I think that's the level of.
I think you're right on. What are, what is a program that would draw numbers to these schools, right? There are plenty of kids in this cluster. The question is what, what are the programs that people would say, I want my kids to stay here in the middle grades?
So, and I think you heard Harriet speak to this a little bit, and this has been a conversation that's been laced in with this, but again, we're not doing program development on this many models. However, what you did here is buildings, um, programs that are college-going, building a college-going culture across the cluster. You've got one that's a Spanish immersion, that you've got another one that's IB, you've got Boys Elliott Humboldt that's starting a STEM program. Um, yeah, I mean, you've got like, we've got the concept of the, um, the junior middle college, which would be like preparing students to be ready to enter, um, a, a college prep kind of high school experience. So you've got concepts that, or things that are already in motion in number of schools across the cluster that do weave together in a, how do you do a cluster-wide college-going culture? So I think you have that much of a concept, and then you keep building. Uh, but this has been a very robust conversation internally with our pre-K-12 cabinet, with our immersion folks, um, with the principals at the schools, with the community. So I think it's kind of concentric circles of conversation that when we zero in on which one of these, then you start to take the other conversation deeper.
I think what we're, maybe what, what we're, what I'm thinking is that we need, in order to be able to, for the community and others to give input as to which of those you should select, there, we need that additional information. We need, we need greater detail. Um, what, you know, same things we've been saying, what?
Some of the things you outlined tonight. Yeah, and I think some of that we can do on some of the ones that, the questions that you raised tonight. So. But my point is, it hasn't been absent conversation about program. It's been very much conversation about program and what are the draws and what are the places we're building on strengths of existing programs, so, yeah.
So I would, no, go ahead. So I would say, um, that I think that's the most important piece, or those are some of the most important pieces. I think we've had a lot of focus on community input, and I think that's important. But I think that as the board, we need to look and see, what do we know is the best thing for kids? And fit that with what the community says. Um, and I'm a little concerned about the conversation, um, around Ocley-Green as a college, junior college prep program, because I like to think, and at least in the schools that I've been in, in the cluster and in other clusters, um, I'm finding in the K eights and in the middle schools that they focus a lot on college-going. I mean, there are college banners all over, there's discussion about college in the classes. And so I wouldn't want people to think that we're not looking for a college-bound or career-bound students in every single one of our middle schools. We don't need, and it's not necessarily a junior middle school where you have to go if you want to go to college. So I would just be a little careful about using that language.
Any other? Real, real quick, if I can, I'm, and I, again, if you can explain this tonight, that would be great, but, um, so, options A and B that you had, you showed us in December, um, show Woodlawn K five estimated 2015 enrollment at about 389. Tonight it's three, or 443. Um, how do we account for the extra 50-plus students in the last month?
Um, if you recall, in order to create Ocley-Green, recreate it as a middle school, the current students that are there have to have options to go elsewhere. So in this scenario, you have, um, a cohort of Woodlawn students joining in with Woodlawn K five students. So you've got Ocley-Green and Woodlawn coming together, then the middle grades splitting off in 2014. The difference of those additional K five students that are currently at Ocley-Green going to Woodlawn is the difference that you see in the numbers.
Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Collins?
I just had, uh, one more. Uh, in terms of, uh, having Ocley-Green in option two become a middle school, um, is it necessary to wait a full year? Is that a nice to have or is that a must-have? And I guess I'm asking, because we have lots of middle school models, we, we know what the general curriculum is, um, I guess I'm, I'm asking the why. Why, why wait a year and why wouldn't we be able to pull this off next year?
Well, there's many reasons why I don't think you could pull it off by September of next year. If you went with that option, if you were thinking you didn't need a full year, I'm thinking that the disruption it would cause to implement after the year had begun.
No, no, I wouldn't suggest.
Right. I don't, so I think that's why you end up with a full year is because I don't think if between February and September, you could conceptually get the piece together. Because you want to do a couple of things that we haven't done. One is that you want to have as much potential input from the communities as possible to answer the question of why would I want to send my student here? And part of the reason they would want to send their student there is, is that they would have some input into the programmatic base that ultimately gets put in place. And, um, in addition, um, one of the things that also became very clear in, in terms of some of the conversations that we had is that organizationally, um, there tended to be a sense that we don't fully plan out what it is we intend to do before we do it. And then once implementation begins, the lack of planning that, uh, came before ends up in the implementation not being as robust and, um, as full-blown as it needs to be, which ultimately then leads to a lack of commitment, uh, to the follow-through, which doesn't make the program go where it needs to go. So it's really, um, more of that than anything else.
I just had one more, um, piece of information that might be helpful, or, or maybe you've decided that it's, um, is well within reason, but, um, that in one of the options, or in a couple of the options, it talks about more kids being on a bus. And buses, in my head, mean extra expense, and so I'm not sure, um, obviously there are costs associated, but it'd be, as we, as we've reduced bus service, reduced bus service, I'd be curious to find out what, what additional cost that is, um, especially as we talk about portables and temporaries and that.
I, I also just want to compliment the staff on getting this down to two options. I think the six options were confusing and frustrating for the community, so I think this gives us the, uh, opportunity to, to really understand what we're all talking about, so thank you for that.
Thank you for your questions.
And thank you. Um, yeah, I hope that we was able to provide some useful information to you. I, I think at this point, there's, at least my sense, there is quite a bit of hesitation on either model that, that is being proposed, and I think that is much more clarity than we have in some of the questions that got posed. I think we'll be able to move forward or not, and so I think, looking forward to the next updated, uh, report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we have the next on the business agenda, um, so the board will now consider the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Uh, do I have a motion, a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Reagan, Moose, and Director Sargent's.
No.
Noes. Director Reagan and Director Knowles. Is that correct? I heard it this way.
That's okay.
Okay.
Whoever.
Whoever. Is there, uh, I, I think they caught who got it first, and so if I don't say it. Is there any board discussion of the business agenda? Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda? The board will now vote on the, on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The business agenda is approved by a vote of 7 to 0. With student representative Garcia voting.
Yes.
Um, wanted to announce before we adjourn that 2012 Oregon School Board Association elections have been conducted, and I am pleased to announce that Director Reagan has been elected to serve in the position number 17 in the OSBA board. Doug Montgomery is also representing Monoma County. Uh, he will serve in position number 19. Congratulations to both. Uh, the next meeting of the board will be a study session on Tuesday, January 22nd, 2013, at, uh, 6:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.